I'd like to call the village trustees. Radio a meeting to order. First order of business, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consideration of any changes, submissions are removed from the agenda.
We can strike item. Number sixteen. Amendment to policies from the handbook. We will move that to the genuine meeting.
I'll read the whole thing too. Approve minutes from previous meetings. April one, twenty twenty five.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second that.
Um, we're just doing April one or both?
Uh, both.
Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Comments from citizens? I see none. Allocation and review and possibly approved. We have a pretty good list.
Pretty good list there. Um, we'll start the first one, which is more of, I believe, a um, just clerical, um, for six Andover. Um, they removed some of the laws within their business. They received a C O from the fire marshal to this effect. Therefore, they need to be accrued to have their allocation for this reduced to a three building.
Make a motion to approve the request at six Andover Street to reduce the allocation from five commercial base to an allocation of three.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is five Whispering Pines. Current allocation is a four bedroom home. Like to add an additional one to make it five bedroom home. Um, that is a fee that has been paid and just an allocation.
I'll make a motion that we approve that slower allocation for five Whispering Pines.
Guys, I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah. Guys have noticed, um, a lot of X bedrooms increasing in allocation to X bedrooms.
Mm-hmm.
Is that indicative of real estate sales?
I think it, um, probably is indicative of folks that are now selling their house that, you know, have had or, you know, are converting another bedroom, had another bedroom to, you know, obviously add value to the property.
I mentioned that before, Justin, because on the zoning side, they would have liked to go and inspect those buildings at, at the time of the purchase, you know, the sale, sale. Cause they don't have any way to know how many are in there until they go to sale. And I talked to them on zoning before, cause I, I come to this board with that, cause most of these were on sale.
And we, I mean, I just noticed it over the course of these few months.
And I, and I mentioned that a while back. Cause I just thought that didn't seem really fair all the time that, that was the only time we caught it.
We've had, you know, some issues that we're trying to tighten up a little bit where, you know, when permits are issued, following up and having a better time from generally speaking, a permit goes for two years. Um, but every year trying to institute a follow-up to whether that permit's still being, is in use, needs to be voided. And additionally, if work is completed, issuing a C O. Because what is happening is permits, if they're not followed up on, when the house goes to be sold, you know, now all of a sudden someone's coming for a C O that was never issued. Now they need one, but they have five bedrooms and the permit was for three or for four. And it becomes a major problem with, and it's a two-way street. Because, you know, we're not necessarily, it's not on the onus of the town to track down by statute, track down people for C Os, but it's in our best interest because all it does is eventually hold up. You know, it holds up real estate sales and it holds up progress and it just ultimately it leads to a lot of hurt feelings is what happens. And I think, you know, our owners and sellers could be better about it, but you know, things change hands so many times that sometimes you run into it that it's two and three owners. Um, so we're trying to implement here and, you know, in planning and zoning office, more of a repetitive, and it doesn't have to be, but you know, every year you know what permits you issue. You circle back to them and say, all right, where are we with these, so on and so forth.
I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
One thing that worries me is also, cause we, cause we don't have, nobody inspects them. Somebody can have a bedroom that doesn't have egress. And you know, we're getting a dual allocation. We haven't even seen the room, because the room's safe, doesn't have egress, doesn't have two exits. And we don't have any say at all. And we're approving things.
I appreciate that.
Did we vote on that already?
No.
Both, both on six.
Six is law rich heights.
We haven't done, we didn't vote on it. We seconded it, but we never.
That's what I'm reading.
Oh, Whispering Pines, she said.
Yeah, we just need to take a vote on it.
On Whispering Pines?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to head. Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is six law rich heights. Same situation, four bedroom home. Um, would like to add an allocation for a five bedroom.
I'd like to propose a motion to approve six law rich heights. Allocation from a four bedroom home to a five bedroom home.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Partridge lot, road lot forty six. Currently is a four bedroom home allocation, would like to increase to a five bedroom.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Partridge Road Lot Forty Six. Allocation increase from a four bedroom home to a five bedroom home.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fifty nine Birch Lane.
Just a little bit confusion on there.
Okay, five bedroom allocation.
Did they ever pay the three bedroom allocation? It says on here, allocation never paid.
They have. So the, the full amount is thirty nine hundred and forty five hundred for a five bedroom allocation. They never paid the three bedroom, even though it was granted. So I would say they granted the five bedroom. Cause they never paid it. So that was basically rescinded.
So, so then they'll pay for the?
They will pay the amount of thirty nine and forty five hundred and that will give them a five bedroom allocation.
Okay.
The forty five is the book on, right?
Correct.
It's cool. They got ten years.
Yeah.
I have a motion.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to uh, give a five bedroom allocation to fifty nine Birch Lane.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I just want to make a public comment. The planning and zoning board will have direction from this board and the select board and any other boards that I'm aware of to actually understand what the waiter, water, wastewater and other allocations and permit requests are for. It's getting a little too, uh, loosey goosey.
Do you know how to spell that?
I was just trying to figure out how to put it into it.
Well, I'm trying to, I think they, I'm.
We're gonna start holding properties more accountable through the zoning inventory.
Cause, yeah.
Department head reports. Everything looks like it's going pretty well.
Guys had a couple, uh, water issues on Main Street there back in April.
Yeah, so, um, big, big part for water and wastewater has been, you know, a lot of the curb stops, manholes, etc., are part of the paving project. So, so far, so good. But the department has been extremely busy, for sure. Um, still trying to, there, you see at the bottom, you know, twenty yards of topsoil. This is kind of hammering out some of the uneven spots down the wastewater plant. I think you noticed the last thing we did, we took that a couple of months ago, we took that cover down, took the generator off it and tested that, so. We're just still kind of an old and pattern regarding repairs there. But you know, that's everything there, and I say repairs, it's more medication.
Future proofing.
Yeah.
Uh, thank everybody at the wastewater and water department that do a great service in this town.
Agreed.
Age receivable reports.
So, kind of looking through this, as you can see.
The one twenty days.
I think it's getting smaller though.
Um, we do have, you know, and we're kind of approaching a spot here. You know, I'll ask and look for some direction from the board because we do have on here, um, you'll notice there's a number of ones that are sitting in a ninety, one twenty that are growing increasingly high and some of those become problematic because some of them are just wastewater as well. And that's, you know, your, you know, your purview is just wastewater. Um, and we don't have the ability, obviously, to turn off just wastewater. But we do have the ability to turn off water, but you do have some, for example, that are on town wastewater, but not on water. Um, and the real option there is to put a lien against the property. My recommend, so we have a new billing cycle that comes out June nine. With that, we are drafting disconnect notices. And I would also ask that, you know, you give, allow us to, for properties that don't come forth, you allow us to put liens on the properties for the, uh, balances of their utilities. Cause that's really our only recourse with that at this point. You know, there are a couple that have, you know, that are, some of the higher balances that are on payment plans, that are paying them down. Those are not necessarily problems. But there are three to four that are, you know, what we call the repeat offenders, unfortunately, that, you know, we're gonna have to take action and either A, shut off the water that has utilities or B, close to the property.
Uh, Mr. McNameer, may I ask you a question? What happens if a property pays their water bill in full, knowing that it can get shut off? And they don't pay the sewer bill, knowing that it can't be shut off?
Um, I mean, if that happens, there's, again, it's really the only course of action is to put a lien because you don't have these two boards, you know, so, and here's, hey, is that if, right now, the boards, water and wastewater commissioners, the wastewater commissioners, water commission operate and evaporate themselves. So there's, you can't, you have no jurisdiction over the water. If, and hopefully, when the merger goes through, we now have a board of water and wastewater commissioners. That changes everything. Because if you don't pay one, you're still beholden to that door that can shut off the other.
Is there language that we might be able to draft in the interim that ties?
Ties them together?
Them together to say, if you don't pay your wastewater bill, we reserve the right to turn off your water as well?
I don't think so, but we, I can, well, that's gonna be a legal question.
I don't know the legal implications of that.
I don't know, just because it's really the way it's set up in town, it's, it's two different, it's separate entities. It would be like turning on, it's silly, I know they're directly correlated, but in a sense, it could almost be like turning off your electric because you didn't pay your cable bill.
Okay.
You know, something like that.
Um, I will say there is some movement, um, in a rental registry. And I think that we should take a hard look at water and sewer payments, uh, as tied to that permit issuance.
And there is also, and this kind of becomes beholden to me a little bit too, with the rental registry. They also have a direct correlation to liquor licenses.
Um, I don't know what the trustee's feeling is. I don't, I don't like putting liens on properties or anything like that. I, I feel like that, you know, should be reserved for, you know, break in case of emergencies. Not to do that. But there is a point where if you're making money operating and you're using a utility, a public utility, we as taxpayers, you know, should probably allow that, so.
And I, I agree, I don't like how we can, like, put a lien on a property, but that currently is our only course of action.
I mean, I mean, we do it for back taxes, right?
Well, not really, it's just.
Tax tax, yeah. Which is harsher than lien.
Yeah.
It sure is.
I mean, we can definitely look and see if there is a, a way to, you know, what.
I think the way you have it set up, personally, I think that that's our only avenue to, to force, to try to get, um, get our money. And, I mean, we're providing a service they shouldn't be paying for.
So what I'll do too is, I mean, I'll, we'll pursue that. I will look at some other models from other towns I never have as to what other towns do for wastewater utility. I'm sure this isn't an uncommon problem. I mean, I, I do feel about that.
I think we gotta make some action, but I don't know either, I don't know. I, I like your, this guidance of looking into it.
Yeah.
See.
So, so I, if, I mean, do you need a, do you need a motion? Do you need a vote, just a consensus?
Yeah.
Um, so if there, if there's not another way, I guess, we'll probably vote the lien.
Okay, and I'll just proceed, obviously, before anything happens, I'll bring it before the board.
Yeah, cause you got one, one more, you said June. June, we're starting.
June nine?
Yeah.
Okay, twenty two Andover Street. Allocation, uh, allocation utility balance discussion.
So this is for twenty two Andover Street. If you recall, this is regarding, we had a, a bit of an issue there and you kind of gone around and around. And it's been a property, um, that was not on, basically, it was, there was a mistake on the town's end where, when the new system came online, the property was not listed as a major, yeah. Um, so that goes back. Um, there's a number of extenuating circumstances here, and I don't know how in detail you want to get regarding this, but they are asking for a increased allocation, which they're going to pay. The balance, basically, as I did it with the, the water commissioners, allowed me to negotiate an agreement with them to settle the balance of their water, of their water, which I would recommend doing for the wastewater as well. So it's, and I set it in lieu of that, and the agreement we came to is, I believe it's fair. It allows them to pay it. They've paid, they've paid it. Um, and they would also allow them to pay the additional allocation.
I totally agree with that.
So if you're born with that, um, you know.
Cause we, we had agreed at four thousand on just the sewer part.
Yeah.
I don't know what the.
The numbers have changed a little bit, yeah.
Make a motion.
Yeah.
I remember this discussion back in March. I'm happy, um.
But that number, I'll tell you that that number has, has since changed.
Yeah.
So we agree, you know, again, I don't want to get explicit, it's a borderline kind of executive session thing. Um, I'm just asking, because of the sensitivity of the matter, I was just asking to allow me to negotiate it with.
Do you have a motion for that?
Consensus or?
Consensus is fine.
Uh, you have my blessing to do that.
Yep.
My also.
And then we just need to approve the allocation for an additional bedroom, from a two bedroom to a three bedroom. Allocation fee has been paid at five hundred and forty-six dollars.
I would make a motion to approve the additional bedroom allocation.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
We didn't do that last month?
No, because we had, because they had, we weren't gonna do anything until they.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't remember.
They have since paid.
All in favor?
Aye.
Review, uh, proposed town and village charter.
So I just very quickly, um, did this last night as well at the select board meeting. You have a copy, uh, we had our, um, joint meeting last week for the town and village merger. A lot of good discussion, some changes were made, um, that our attorney, Ms. Buxton, updated on her co-, um, her copy of the draft, which you have. So those changes were put in front of you. I will be sending out tonight, I was just waiting till after this meeting, to send to everyone, board members and committee members, a copy of the updated draft, as well as the redline version, um, so you can see the changes. We have another meeting, obviously, we have this week and next week, with a meeting for this board on the third, which at that point, both boards would be looking to take a vote on approving the charter and moving forward towards the public acceptance period, which becomes a whole legal dance a little bit. So, would ask you just to take the charter, take it, look it over. Um, I will be sending that out after we leave here. And I'll have both versions, again, the redlined and the, the clean version, so you'll have both.
Can I ask you just a quick question, cause I got this last minute? Um, under section thirteen, on page three, under the select board paragraph A, the last sentence reads, "The terms of office for the select board may be changed by a vote of an electorate at an annual meeting." She added that as a redlined option at our joint merger meeting. My question is, the term.
It shouldn't be, I don't think it's terms, but it was really meant to be the, the number, the size of the board.
That's right. So it's a little vague language. I don't know if, um, she worded that like that on purpose or?
I will ask.
But I look forward to, uh,
Yes.
learning more about this.
Okay, we're doing an approved bid for sidewalks.
So we did have our sidewalk bids went out for replacement on Pleasant Street, High Street and Depot Street. Um, where, in the entrance on Depot Street, where the church, like at the church entrances located. Those bids came in on, I believe, thirtieth, I believe, um, of April. And the low bid by a substantial amount was Sanderson Trucking and Excavation, forty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents per linear foot, which is a total of sixty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars for that project. And that would be my recognition.
And is any of that under that money we got there?
For ARPA?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, that's what that's all paid.
I remember those.
Yeah.
Uh, and the bid is oranges to oranges?
It is.
That's great. I make a motion to approve Sanderson Trucking and Excavation bid.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you want to approve fiscal year twenty-six highway financial plan?
These are just your status quo, um, annual financials for the village highway. Class one, two, class one, two and three roads. Just funding to receive, how it's based from the state. So class one roads in the village is two point two nine five miles. Class two, two point five four, and class three, four point eight three. Uh, for a total estimated income, uh, funding of thirty thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty cents.
No change from fiscal year twenty-five?
No change.
First four miles of road is the last three in the village.
And it's all pieced together.
I guess so. Uh, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Sign that.
Do you want to approve road and bridge standard certification of compliance?
So this is very much in the same draft as the previous, just as certification of compliance that we do adopt the standards and we certify that we have enough to date.
I thought it was this one that you was, I thought you had to. I thought you were sending out this one at the same time.
Those two are together. That's the first one you thought to me.
We don't sign that, we sign that, you know, send this one through. There's that. Um, I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I wrote the date in red, so it's gonna look like Christmas.
Oh, geez. He has one of those multicolored clickbait.
I don't wish I did though. You know?
Short-term rental registry discussion.
So kind of, um, had the same discussion last night. You have, you know, we've been discussing the rental registry proposal. Terry Carter, our planning commission chair, has worked very hard on putting some proposals together, which you have in front of you. Select board last night had some good discussion on it, made some notes. Uh, there were some changes made. The document that you have does not reflect the changes from last night, just so it's kind of, you're seeing the same thing that they saw last night. But, um, I guess I will ask Terry just to kind of give a quick overview of, you know, of where we're at and we can go from there.
Okimo Valley TV, do you guys need her to speak in the microphone?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, possibly.
You can just.
Drag it over. I can hold it? Yeah, I want to stand. Okay, so does yours say, under short-term rental, under the, um, definitions, does yours say hosted or does it say homesteaded?
Homesteaded.
Okay, so you have the, you have a really old copy.
Section two is unhosted.
Okay, so, um, Ben, after he received that, the document you have, he suggested, and Chris Callahan, who I met with yesterday morning, also agreed that it should be hosted and unhosted. But, um, Chris said that making them prove that they're hosted by having the homesteaders declaration form would be great for verification. He said it would solve a lot of problems too, because you'd actually find out who actually owns it. Um, you know, that even though they're represented by a company or whatever. Another suggestion Ben had was to include, include some more definitions. Chris Callahan said we needed a, well, the rental, last night, the select board talked about having it for all rentals and not just short-term, but for all rentals. And so the new document, which I'll send you when you get home, has, I've changed everything so it reflects all rentals.
May I ask you a question real quick, Ms. Carter? If it reflects all rentals, which I was present last night's meeting and that was the general consensus, if the laws are different for a short-term rental versus a long-term rental, it simply shouldn't be a same document, it should be two separate documents.
Okay.
Does, does that, does that follow the line of thought, or should we try to incorporate two different?
No, I think that, I think that's, makes sense. And that wouldn't be that hard to do. No, I think that, I think that's, makes sense, and that wouldn't be that hard to do, I just spent like, I spent like a couple hours changing into both, but I can do that.
Are any other towns that do the short-term rentals, do any of the towns have that?
There isn't any other town except, I think St. Paul, this is the only other place that has something for long-term rentals.
Was the select board aware that they already have regulations for long-term rentals?
I did bring that up.
Okay, 'cause I just, I'm a long-term renter.
Yeah, and they, I found them online too.
Yeah, 'cause I, I've, we have them already.
Yeah, we have them already, I, I really.
Noah?
Uh, what, what do you think the difference is, the laws between long-term and short-term are?
I'm unsure, all I know is that there's more laws pertaining to short-term rentals than long-term, is my understanding of it. Perhaps Ms. Carter could be, uh, clearer on that, but that's my understanding.
That's my understanding, and every time I tried to change the document, it was referring to the short-term rental regulations, and so I couldn't say that we have to have the same regulations for long-term rentals, because that's not what the state is saying. So every time I tried to, I, there's several things I haven't changed, you'll see in the new document, because they all refer to eighteen VSA four four six eight, which is only for short-term rentals. Really, the long-term rental, um, document, let me see if I can find it, took me a hard, long time to find it online. Um, it's, was moved in nineteen eighty-two to the fire safety division of the state, and so it's called residential rental housing safety codes of the Department of Public Safety Division of Fire Safety. And that, there's a whole, they go through a whole gamut of stuff for long-term rentals, and we can just cut and paste that into a, into a, another document, but it already exists through the state that they're regulated that way.
And my understanding of it is they're just different, so we either craft one kind of mega-document. See, I don't wanna speak for the select board, but I'll speak for myself. We wanna see safety as a priority here, and we understand that long-term rentals often lack a lot of safety guidance and updates, as a general, so we wanna see that, but if that requires two different documents because it is two different laws.
And can we do it at two different times, so that we can get this one going, the short-term rental one going?
I don't wanna speak for anybody but myself, but I would like to see the ball rolling on this.
Yeah, me too.
But I'd like to see it also have long-term relevance to it as well.
Okay, and what Chris said, um, Chris Callahan, our zoning lawyer, said, that it's really important that we, um, that we define occupancy. Last night I mentioned, his suggestion was two people per bedroom, that should be occupancy. But, uh, yesterday, um, Ben Whalen said that that doesn't have to be so, as long as they follow the rules, and they have two egresses, and they have a sprinkler system, and everything else, so that kinda got thrown out. But, um, Chris's suggestion is that we define occupancy by wastewater permits, sewer allocations, and compliance with what Ben talked about last night, the NFDA one oh one fire safety codes. And Chris said, you should define it occupancy by that, and go with the most restricted number of those three things. The wastewater permit, the sewer allocation, and compliance with the fire safety codes. You should say, that's how we define occupancy, the le- the most restrictive number of people can be in the house according to those three documents, which they would have to produce for their application. And he also suggested that, um, part of their application should also be their, um, the lister's card. That says exactly how many bedrooms they have, and, you know, that kinda thing.
So, so don't we say, in the town, is there something about two, two people?
Yeah, definitely, it's definitely in the sewer allocation.
Um, for the sewer.
Mm-hmm.
So you, you, by that definition, you couldn't have four people in a bedroom, right?
Yeah, and that's why all the other towns around here have the two per bedroom, and the, and then two extra overall, because they were taking effect if you had a toddler, a baby, in a bedroom with you, you know, you'd have two extra. Anyway, um.
Yeah, here's a question.
Yep.
Go ahead there.
No, thanks, I, I just wanted to add a, a quick comment, um, and you can check with, with Chief Whalen, but there's, it, it's my understanding that there's, there's no difference in fire safety law for long-term. You know, they don't differentiate between long-term and short-term rentals, um, you know, the fire safety piece of it. What does differ in some of the short-term, um, laws is the, the tax, the, the rooms and meals tax, and then the additional two or three percent, uh, short-term rental tax that they added last year. Like, as far as fire and safety, there's, there's no difference in the law between long-term and short-term rentals. Thank you.
I think Terry has it in there, there's short-term rental, you have to post, um, post like your information of like, yes, I'm, I'm up to code, I have, you know, your health and safety, your tax numbers, um.
Yeah, that is, um.
For short-term, which is not required for long-term.
That's in section four, so that's in here, that should be in your packet, um, number six, section four, um, that's the eighteen VSA four four six eight, they have to provide educational materials, um, within limitation, the self-certification form pertaining to health and safety preca- precautions that operators must take. So it's not just the tax, it's also, they have to, you know, they have to certify that they're up to their health and safety codes, and it's a separate code for short-term rentals.
Have you spoken to Mr. Whalen post last night's meeting?
I haven't, no, but I did, and I, and Chris Callahan told me to incorporate almost everything that he said in his email into this document, which I did, into the new document.
So it has long-term and short-term built in?
Well, I built that in here, but there's no problem with separating it. I mean, I just, I'll just take the one, I saved it as a different thing, so I could go backwards if I needed to.
I guess if our fire safety professional or our chief, uh, thinks that that's a fine enough idea to keep them together, because the regulations, like Mr. Alvin alluded to and Mr. Schmidt, are really the same.
But I'm finding they're not the same, though. I looked a long and hard for the long-term rental ones, and that's the separate document, the residential rental housing safety codes of the Department of Public Safety Division of Fire Safety. Those are the long-term rental regulations, and then the short-term regulations are all in the eighteen VSA section of, of the state for short-term rentals. Um, I, last night I shared that, I talked to Chris about, Scott Bates had a concern about, will the town be liable if we're asking for a million dollars' worth of insurance, if it goes over a million dollars, 'cause a whole bunch of people like perish in a building or whatever? I'm not saying that, you know, like, I don't care, 'cause I do. And he said that, um, Chris Callahan said that we don't have to worry about that, because of this long-term, um, blah that started with the King of England, that damaged insurance coverage can't go over a hundred thousand dollars, the town has immunity for that, so that you can't, you know, you can't be sued. The town cannot be sued because of this old law that goes back to, I forget which king. So I got that question answered for Scott. Um, another thing, okay, we added to this one is number, on section four, C, number nine, the application should include the homesteaders declaration if it's a hosted rental, otherwise they don't need that. The wastewater permit, the sewer, sewer allocation, and the lister's card, so that was added. Ben Whaling said, Ben Whalen said you don't, in D one, you don't need to have all of that written out, and I guess if you have the cards and you're asking it for them in the application, then maybe you don't. I remember Rose, I met with Rose too about this, and she read that, and she said, and do I ever give my firstborn son as well? Because we're requiring so many things.
Logan?
I think, well, just a point on, on, uh, Chief Whalen's comments last night, I, I thought that, um, I think part of what he was saying, and part of my understanding of this in the past, has been that rental, there are no specific regulation, or there are very few specific regulations around long-term rentals explicitly in that way. A lot of it is just that, you know, there is a statute that defines any building, any building that is rented for more than one day a year as a public building, and so then, anything that's rent, anything that is rented, then has to, uh, follow public building safety, fire safety codes, so I think that was one point. On the, um, municipal liability, there is a new bill, there is a bill that, I think, I, I don't know where it ended up. I think it ended up getting roped into the T bill or something else, that's, you know, like, more than likely going to pass. You know, right now, it's kind of, everything's in a holding pattern, because legislature's really strange and weird, and they do weird things, but, um, they, there, there was a very small provision that they, they, uh, kinda dropped in there about limiting municipal liability to a certain amount. Actually, you know, putting that into statute, it's more related, you know, in a really weird roundabout way, it's related to this idea that they really want people to use less road salt, and they thought that by using less road salt, and, you know, opting into this program of using less road salt, you might in turn make yourself more liable for accidents that happen on your roads, because you're using less road salt. And so part of the cover for, um, that the, the, the LCT had wanted for towns, if they otherwise complied with that program, was to, to put into statute, limiting liability, municipal liability at a certain amount for, for such things, you know, court claims. Um, so I think, you know, that might be just important to make sure, I mean, if, if Chris Callahan thinks we're already covered under. Yeah, under that, that's helpful too, I think it's, it's always nice when there is a statute, just to reference it, um, 'cause then it, you know, it just, we call it belts and suspenders, is just having, having yourself covered in two ways is always helpful, and, um, makes it a little faster to go through court proceedings. Um, I think that was all.
And I can put, I can put all those details on here, I, I briefly mentioned that they can't be sued, but I can put the details of why you cannot be sued for over a hundred thousand dollars. Um, I don't know what else, like, there's other changes here, I guess I gotta send it to you, but while we left it last night, was that, um, I would meet with Rose tomorrow, and next, have, you know, go over how I've made the changes that Ben has asked us to make, and that Chris Callahan asked us to make, and that the select board has asked us to make, and whatever you guys decide tonight, I'm gonna go over that with Rose tomorrow, and, um, attend your meetings in June, in early June, and hopefully, my hope is that we tend it, we send it to a, um, public hearing in mid-July, we could actually get it going in September. And we're saying they don't have to be expected for one to five years, and this document in a couple different places, so it would be no problem with starting it without even all the people in place, because the money would come in, and registrations would come in, and then you'd see what you have to work with, and who you have, who you have the money to hire to work with that, you know, as far as needing somebody in the town office and somebody in the fire department. Um, another thing that Chris, let me see, another thing that the fire chief asked me to add, was section seven on, section five, after section five, um, section seven, he said that I needed to add that the fire chief or the certified, local certified person has a right to deny occupancy if the requirements for occupancy have not been met, or if the fees have not been collected. So he said that was something that I had missing from here. Chris had a suggestion that the first year, the fees be reduced by a hundred dollars if it's hosted or unhosted. Um, in this document, I put that you didn't even have to pay if you had a long-term rental, 'cause we certainly don't wanna discourage those in any way. But, um, he said that if you said, if you pay by September first and register by Sep- December first of two thousand twenty-five, that you would, um, you would get a hundred dollar discount, and that would encourage people to, that was just his suggestion. But also, when I met with Rose, I had had this at July first, because I had, this is the, West Windsor, that's when they collected the money, and I initially started with their form, because they, it's the most recent one, and because it was written by a lawyer. But, uh, Rose said, don't say July first, 'cause that's when everything else changes over, and that this, we keep these, these fun separate, if you had asked, asked for it in September first. There's other language that was changed, but I'll send it to you tonight, so you can see what that is, that Chris changed. Words here and there, he deleted one section, he said it was unnecessary, it already mentioned somewhere else. Do you guys have any questions, or changes you'd like to make? I think I heard loud and clear, you could just separate the two.
I, I'm in favor of having a rental registration, uh, both short-term and long-term. I think that, uh, we need that to, for a myriad of reasons, A, to protect the population, that's primary. There are a couple things in here that I'm concerned about, and it has to do with section four, paragraph B, "The dwelling unit capacity of a short-term rental shall have a maximum of two occupants per bed space." I know you're rewording bed space.
Yeah, it doesn't say that anymore, it says, "The dwelling unit capacity of a rental shall have an occupancy allowed by its wastewater permit, sewer allocation, and compliance when NFDA one oh one fire codes." Now it says that.
I like the compliance of the fire codes. I think if you have a large bedroom, and I made reference of this yesterday, but I'll say it again. If you have a large bedroom, and you have two means of egress, or you have a sprinklered building, you should be allowed to have more than two occupants, and I think, um, that is overtly restrictive, in my, in my opinion. Um, and the other section is section seven, uh, se- I'm sorry, section four, item seven, which is confirmation of liability insurance. I know a lot of towns do require insurance, I know a lot of towns don't require insurance, based on the discussion that you just had, uh, Mr. Nicole, and my understanding is the town is somewhat protected already. So I don't want it to be over, overly onerous, um, for folks.
It was something that we had, we voted in planning commission to have insurance, we had two people that didn't think it was a good idea, and three people that did, um, but then Ben Whalen came to our next meeting, and he said that he thought people should have it, he said that the renters should be protected in some way, like that, the people that walked out of that condo lost everything, 'cause they had to leave immediately, and they had no recourse for getting, they all saw iPads and laptops, and they had no, he mentioned that as a reason why you should have insurance.
I'm no, uh, homeowner's insurance specialist by any means, but isn't there policy carve-outs for short-term rentals with homeowner's insurance policies?
Um, a lot of the towns, um, require a short-term rental, uh, addition to endorsement, so they have proof of liability and casualty insurance and a short-term rental endorsement, so that's required in Plymouth, Chester.
I like that.
Um, Woodstock.
It's fine, I guess.
And Londonderry, and I didn't, West Windsor. The place didn't require it, do I have any that didn't require it? Chester, wait, Chester also does. Let me see. Yeah, so also Killington, and it has to be short-term rental insurance in Killington.
So the rate, the way that it's?
So every single one does, except Wind Hall and Peru, in my research.
So the way that seven is written currently in this document, confirmation of liability insurance of not less than a million dollars to cover each short-term rental?
Well, that should say casualty too.
That could be an endorsement.
Well, yeah, these all require casualty liability and the short-term rental endorsement. Unless it's already part of the hosting platform, like, some of them have hosting platforms, and they already require insurance. Chester's is like that.
I think you've, you and the planning commission have put a lot of work into this, I applaud it, I think it looks great, I'd like to move forward with it, um, there are just a couple, you know, concerns that I have, um, but they're easily discussed and we didn't.
Logan, I'll make sure I give details on that confirmation part.
Are you looking for a direction from the board?
No, I just think, um, Terry's s- summed it up, she's gonna make, made the changes, we'll kind of resend that out either to myself or to the boards in the whole, and then it'll be discussed that, uh, once you get it. Obviously, we're gonna take some time to adjust it, and then we'll, you know, we have another meeting in June, we'll do the next up.
I just wanna say that Noah is collecting information about all the companies, and trying to find the best fit for Ludlow.
Cool.
As our planning commission liaison and as a selectman.
That's a, a great service to this, so thank you. Okay, thank you, Ms. Carter.
Okay, thank you. Good job. Vendor ordinance discussion.
So, kind of, uh, continuation of our conversation that we had in our last meeting regarding, you know, vendor, our vendor ordinance and vendor permitting in, in town, um. Which has obviously been spurred along by um, now a couple of different food vendors, food trucks that have taken up um, spots in town. Um, it has kind of been, I'll be honest, it's kind, it is, it's opened up a lot of interest and discussion um, over our vendor ordinance. How, how sustainable it is, how, you know, applicable it is to the vendors that come into town and wanna set up for a business in the town and also how it um, protects, how we protect our brick and mortar businesses that are, you know, established facilities here that pay taxes and pay utilities, et cetera, et cetera. So um, I've had a lot of discussion with um, you know, individual board members, community members. I've spoken with the Chamber of Commerce about it. Carol Lighthall, just to try and get my head and our head around how, what the best way for us to, to tackle this because I'll be honest with you, it, it, the more I look at it, think about it, the more Pandora's proverbial box it opens because we have a lot of things that are already established in town that if you make certain changes are directly affected by the ordinance. Um, you know, I, this again was brought up because obviously we have the situation next door where one food truck is parked within shouting distance to another restaurant that serves the same type of cuisine, which becomes an adverse effect. Um, and again, I'm not trying to say that we shouldn't be able to have food vendors. I think that it's, you know, that's a unique and good opportunity, but also we have a right, I, or a ownership to protect our businesses to a certain extent. That is, you know, that pay, do pay taxes, utilities, et cetera. Um, and I'm not trying to say that we are trying to snuff out free enterprise at, at all, but I do think looking at the ordinance, the permitting process, um, what some of the guidelines are, um, you know, is gonna be, is prudent to do right now. Um, and I'm kind of looking, you know, we had a very good discussion la, you know, in our last meeting that kind of pushed this in the right direction and I've gathered a fair amount of of data from other towns, um, from other, you know, other businesses that gives us a kind of a direction, but I think, you know, we're kind of looking for board feedback, public feedback on how much do you want to change? And I think we also, again, while being aware of what we already have established, but I, what I'm saying by that is to an extent, you know, we allow vendors, but also if you were to be overtly restrictive, this realistically, the farmer's market that starts tomorrow, Sunday, isn't, is very similar to a food vendor, you know? Um, so we have to be aware of the things like that without kind of, you know, backtracking on something we've already done.
I own a restaurant down.
You do?
Yeah. Some seats are, some seats are tied to water and wastewater.
Yep.
How does that work with vendors?
Doesn't.
So what water are they using, in theory?
They probably have their own potable water within the, or they are unbeknownst to us tied into a, you know, I'm doubting they're tied into a system, but I'm guessing a truck.
I know for a fact the one that is um, right in the San Francisco gas station is using the water from the San Francisco station. They're coming out with buckets from them.
That would be my understanding of it. Um, I don't see anywhere in here in our food vendor ordinance, um, section four point zero two on page two. The applicant will also provide the municipal manager with copies of any and all other federal, state and local zoning permits necessary for the itinerant vendor to conduct businesses set forth in the application. It makes no direct line to water or wastewater. But I know at a state level and at a municipal level, me as a restaurant has to have a water and wastewater based on the amount of seats or a gallons per day usage.
That's how you get your allocation.
Correct. Um, so I don't know if that's done through zoning permits or what.
And I don't, yeah, I don't know how you do that with a food truck.
Yeah, because you don't have seats, so. Um, there's definitely gray areas there. The one thing that is not gray in that same paragraph, state of Vermont sales and use tax certificates, meals and rooms tax certificates, and Vermont state health permits to operate a food establishment. I think that food trucks uh, should have all of those things, especially the food establishment Vermont state health permit. To protect the safety of the citizens.
Can I mention what we discussed as the planning board and I asked Brendan to put it on here too? Some ideas from the planning board where permission would be needed from area businesses and that they could be certain distance away from brick and mortars. I think the biggest point is how really unfair they are to brick and mortars. And in all of our zoning, in the town plan and in the village zoning, it says um, that we're not gonna do anything to um, to mess with the vitality of the village and our brick and mortars and, you know, the people that we rely on. Food trucks can come in, they don't have to worry about lighting, they don't, they don't have to go through the stuff that brick and mortars do about signage and lighting and parking and they don't have any of those rules, so they have an unfair competition with the brick and mortars. And um, the other thing I want to say is I think an easy fix on here, one thing I think the planning commission was adamant about was having exemption for farmer's market. In this document, there should be an exemption for farmer's market. And the other thing is, was we're getting them too because Rutland just changed their fees to five hundred dollars to set up your food truck. So we're getting, we're gonna get more probably because our fees are so low. And I think the biggest thing on here to change is the hundred and fifty day permit. And then they can just reapply and get it again. That's, that's not a food truck. I mean, that's like, that's, that's a restaurant. They're there for a hundred and fifty days. A suggestion, like the ones they have up at Jackson Gore or Boat Kimo, is that they would have a three-day permit and that they had to be tied to an event in town and not just pop up and especially when they're popping up, like even the one down in Village, just by Village is a direct competition with Village right across the street, which is why I think they started selling breakfast at Village. Cause they, you know, or cause the donut guy, the guy that owns a donut shop, obviously has them. And also that's not even density isn't looked at. When that food truck showed up there, does he have the density to have that food truck there? You know, they don't have to go through the things that brick and mortar have to go through, so it's really an unfair competition that's set up there.
So, so this that we have is our current.
Current, yes.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, definitely the, I don't think the fees are enough.
I don't know.
That's just like, I could give you those fees.
It's twenty-five dollars a day.
Drag a wheelbarrow down and put something in that.
And a hundred and fifty days, it's only two hundred and fifty bucks or something. It stops at two hundred and fifty bucks.
Hey, has, do you know what, you said Rutland's gone up to five hundred dollars. Do they have a limit on days?
I don't know that. I could find that out though.
And I, I know they have quite a few food trucks in Chester, I think. Do you know what they're, what they're doing? I read about them once in a while.
And, you know.
And, and I agree, we it's gonna be a little hard, but we wanna protect our, our uh, brick and mortar, but, but I, I think there is a place for food trucks also. But we gotta, we gotta figure out how to make that work. Right now, it's, it seems to me pretty easy for food truck to come set up anywhere they want.
With no regulations.
Yeah, no regulations.
And how even safe is that?
Except they do have to supposedly meet uh, state.
Health.
Health and safety. Um, now.
But whether they get inspected.
That's a state regulation.
Right.
So, you know, one thing that has, was brought up to me, um, is a consideration, you know, cause I've you try to think about this and think about things outside the box and be like, alright. Now, is there some way to craft this so you have? If we wanted to, you said there, yes, there could be a place, there is a place for food vendors. Is there a place in town that you could allow permitted use for this? Like, I mean, we do have two, two sites, one soon to be Sam's former site. That is, could you craft something? So you're like, yes, the town of Ludlow allows food vendors on this location at X, X days. And you tie that in with, you know, there are certain days in this town where a majority of the businesses are closed.
Mondays.
So you tie that in and you can say, okay, we're gonna allow it here. That's what you can do. It's cost X, Y and Z. It's a location. A lot of towns do have activities like that that attract, you know, businesses. And that's a way to that we, and I'm just kind of, you know, I'm gonna be honest. This wasn't me, this was my wife thinking this for me. So um, I don't think, I don't think like this. But it, um, you know, it's just, because I think it becomes very difficult when you get into how do you differentiate and not have, you know, I don't wanna say discriminate, but if you can say it's gonna be two hundred feet, how far is far enough? You know what I mean? Or how close is too close? Like, I get it, I think your situation is probably too close. But is, you do have another, um, you know, but realistically, there's another Little Mexico is almost within sight as the crow flies, which isn't really as, you know, in terms of some of the, so how do you define that? I, I don't know. So I think it's, it, it's a, it's a difficult thing.
But, but Little Mexico also has to go through the same.
It's a restaurant.
Exa- exactly. So I'm saying you have, you're either, you gotta be, you know, I think it's our due diligence to protect our businesses, period. With, without, you know, stifling the, you know, an entrepreneur or something like that. Like, there's, there's two ways, but I, what I'm saying is, is it's, it's our duty to do that, but also without saying, well, we can't do that here.
It's also a matter of equity.
Correct. That's the word I was looking for.
You have a food truck that doesn't have to pay for all the things that a brick and mortar has to pay for.
Absolutely.
Their food costs are a lot lower. Their finished product cost is lower than a brick and mortar. So they can charge, in theory, less money to attract higher volume customers.
And, I mean, realistically too, the, the fairness of it, I'm gonna guess, and my answer is that if, you know, some of these food trucks, you know, probably have multiple locations hypothetically that they go to and if, you know, it's a slow day, you pack up and go down the road if you wanted to. I mean, mo, other places, restaurants aren't able to do that. You can't just close. Yeah, so.
I think, this was, this document was written in two thousand eight, I think before what a modern-day food truck is.
Is now.
What they even considered. So applying a vendor ordinance seems different than a food truck ordinance. You know, I, I think you know where I'm going with this and I hate to keep saying, hey, you know, how about this? I think it's a different conversation than a farmer's market vendor ordinance. I think it's a food, a food truck ordinance. Um, I think it's a two very separate issues.
But you do have food trucks that come to the farmer's market.
Yes, but they're in a different capacity because that's an event that's already been posted by something.
I think you would, like you said, you'd need some sort of a event permit, you know, ex, exemption, I think is the word for it.
And I like the idea that your wife had uh, of turning into a food truck destination. Certain towns have that.
She also indicated that I could run it.
Tack it on.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, sure.
You could be out there blowing the whistle.
Yeah, exactly.
No, I think this is a, a serious issue and we owe a serious response to it. I personally have had food trucks at my business, um, and I've paid the permit and I've done according to this and they asked me about water, which is why I brought, brought up water. I, you know, I think uh, a hundred and fifty days is a very long time in the course of a year, uh, to not pay for any infrastructure or any real um, costs like that. And we owe it to the town and to the local business population to look into drafting a food truck ordinance. Opinion on it.
I, I definitely.
Absolutely. I think parking is huge for me too, cause the one down there is just example, it's taken up half the parking spots down there. And, I don't know, it just, that scares me. On zoning, we require a certain amount of spots. That's not gonna happen. There's no handicapped parking. There's nothing designated to them.
Well, also, in order to have a business in town, you have to have X amount of spots, correct? So if those spots go away.
They're gone.
Certain uh, obstructions, you put yourself out of compliance.
Or if you're, if, if you're selling out of a food truck on a lot, that's taking their parking spaces wherever they're they're parked. So, I mean, they're they're making a local business.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm uh, happy to join the consensus and move forward with drafting some sort of either tweak to the vendor ordinance or drafting an entirely new food truck ordinance.
I will.
In the meantime, there are uh, certain things that I think we should make sure are in compliance currently. The Vermont state health permit to operate a food establishment.
Does that fall to the health officer?
Supposedly you brought a permit.
That's a badge.
You wonder why I asked if you had brought your badge with you.
That does not.
No, that's a state, yeah. Sorry, I was just trying to make him nervous.
And then, the other thing was to display said permit, right? It has to be visi, visibly displayed. Uh, article seven point zero one on page three says the permit shall at all times be visibly posted at the location. So.
Okay.
I think we should make sure that that's happening in the meantime.
Maybe they are, I've never looked.
Me neither.
Can I just ask one question about it? Can you um, how does an ordinance get changed? Like, can you just change it at a, at a meeting, like change the hundred and fifty days? Could you just change that? Does it have to be warned and everything?
Has to be warned. There has to be a public hearing.
Okay.
And the select board can then adopt it. Um, as if it's being changed, I believe the select board can do it via vote.
This is the trustees, right?
I'm just saying, yeah, so trustees.
Because it's a village.
But I'm gonna have to check on adopting a new ordinance. That might be a village vote, but I don't think so.
I don't think so. There is, there would be a certain amount of time for.
For reconsideration, yeah.
Like sixty, thirty or sixty days, the town can, uh, you know, you can file a petition and then there will be, if them, they would get down though, that would trigger a town vote.
I think it's very similar to the, it's very similar to how we do the zoning laws.
Yeah.
So you keep warrant it, public hearing, then adoption by the body. And there is a certain amount of uh, reconsideration period.
And there.
If you want, I'll write one up for next, for beginning of June.
If, what would be um.
And you guys can take a look at it and decide if you wanna take it to a public hearing.
Yeah, and maybe when you meet with Rose tomorrow, bring that up with her as well because she had some some, some thoughts on it as well, which will kind of.
How many days are you guys comfortable with? Just so I have a ballpark figure. And what fee are you comfortable? How many days are you guys comfortable with, just so I have a ballpark figure, and how what fee are you comfortable with?
I am unsure of the fee, I would go with the current rate in the area, whatever the town's doing.
Okay, so I'll look up the current rate.
Um.
Rutland's at five hundred and we're uh two fifth, that's a pretty big discrepancy.
I'd say five hundred minimum.
Five hundred minimum.
Um, and for days. I mean, a hundred.
Is that, is that, how long is Rutland's for, for five hundred?
I'll find out, I'll find out Rutland's and Chester's and Springfield's.
I know you know that, but West Windsor is very um, yeah, they're a good bottle, they do a lot of things.
Yeah, they have a lawyer, right, everything?
They just the chair of select.
In terms of.
Do they, I haven't seen any food trucks over there, but.
I don't, they, I know they have a very robust, I just go to their meetings a lot for my for my day job. And they um, they have a very robust process for vendor and that permitting and ordinances and. You know, obviously, they have a lot of that going on, just with the um, you know, Scotty Outdoors and a lot of their. Um, you know revitalization efforts on the mountain. Um, and I just know, I I admire their process, they're very uh careful and it sounds, they you know, they take. A lot of attention to detail.
They actually, for those events, those are big, they probably do have. Uh ordinances for food trucks, cause I'm sure, I mean, they have hundreds of people.
Right, yeah.
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 So what is this covered in a food truck ordinance? You know, why is it called a vendor ordinance, not a food truck ordinance, is there something else included?
I think it, I mean, realistically.
I think that's what it was in two thousand and eight.
It was, if I recall, cause I was only, there was the pie places that weren't trucks, they were like.
Oh, yeah, right in front of shaws, yeah.
Little pop ups, yeah, they were.
Oh, yeah.
There was a fish guy at shaws.
And it's in high school, yeah.
And there was the corn guy.
Yeah.
Yeah, the corn.
Little stand.
Yeah, stained glass shirt.
Yeah, and there's.
I'm sorry, I just remember.
Yeah.
Well, what, so how many days are you guys comfortable with?
I would say if you could look at, I mean, what other towns are doing, I just feel like a hundred and fifty is like.
Good idea.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause some some people have been dealing with this. Um, it'd be a good idea to have. I mean, they've gone through it, so let's, if we do this, let's try to do this right.
Okay.
Did you have a question, I know we kinda went over, she had a hand up.
I'm just curious, so I think when it comes to the truck, obviously, that I'm like focused in on. Uh, that was up in July-ish timeframe, so if we're getting rolling on this now, that probably isn't going to stop anything.
I think theirs was up a little bit later than July, I believe, so it, I but I think.
Let's try to get it before then.
Yeah, I think that the time, think the timeframe is is doable for having it before permits renew, I think so.
I also, I wanna be um. Clear in my position anyway, this isn't about an individual food truck, it's not writing rules for one individual um. Company or idea, I think. I think food trucks do serve a purpose, obviously, and coming from a guy that owns a brick and mortar, um. But I, you know, I wanted to, I'd, I would hate to over restrict it. And lose the opportunity to have food trucks in the area, um, I do think that we need to take a look at it and draft ordinances and make it uh fair and. Protect our businesses and all that, um, but I do wanna be clear on, you know, not drafting this for people.
And Brendan, your voice idea that that my daughter lived in Longmont, Colorado, and she had her permit conference, break below every Thursday, the food trucks are playing.
Sure, yeah.
And we knew they'd be there every Thursday.
I mean, that's something that just strikes me as, as I said before, it's it allows for.
It's probably a different.
Continued enterprise, um, but you know, it's also an attraction of the town, you know, so.
Eric?
It's just not gonna run.
Eric, go ahead.
Alright, thanks, uh, just a couple of quick comments, uh, I think the the narrative that um. Food trucks are unregulated simply isn't true. Uh, you know, they go through a lot of the same processes and inspections as as any brick and mortar does. So to to say that they're just, you know, wild west without any sort of permit or licensing from the state, that was not true. Um, you know, the restaurants in town go through the same. Uh, process with the state health inspectors and, you know, that doesn't. That doesn't mean a whole lot after the fact, you know, that's all online, you can look up any restaurant in town. And, you know, you you'd probably be surprised by some of the uh the low ratings that that some of the places you think are are great. You know, based on inspections, that that's all public record. Um, piece I wanted to just make sure, as Brendan alluded to. Th- this is muddy and difficult, so on the um. The possible changes to the vendor ordinance, the first one you have not allowed within two hundred feet of the same cuisine. Uh, and I know you've made an exception for um the farmer's market. But you you're gonna wanna think that through a little more, because there there's other exceptions that uh could be in violation. Uh, for example, um, you know. Folks have bake sales in front of shaws that that sell the same thing, that the chili festival charges a fee and you get ice cream and, you know, and. It pops across the street, sells ice cream. Yeah, so there would be a hundred different occasions where. You know, a vendor, a temporary vendor uh would be within that two hundred foot selling the same cuisine, so. I think that piece of it needs uh some good thought and and it sounds like you, you know, you've you've thought the same thing. And to to Brendan's other, I uh thought on the sort of location, there's a lot of towns that do that, they they have a, you know, a spot, a designated spot. They have picnic tables there and they sort of have slots that that they rent uh for the food trucks to come in and and usually they're all on the same day, you know, Monday, Tuesday or Saturday. And, you know, a dozen trucks will come in and they pull into their slot and there's tables and there's, you know, porta potties there, whatever, it's a nice um. You you know, place to go and people look forward to going down there, so that piece of it uh should should have some thought too. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric, thank you. Um, directions satisfactory from the trustees?
Yeah, good.
Thank you very much.
Have you possibly updated sewer rates?
Uh, so you do have the printout of proposed possible sewer. Rate increases, um, for both residential and commercial. But you have. A, you know, increase based off a three percent increase, five percent, ten percent, fifteen percent. Shows you the revenue increase, what the revenue would be for a three percent increase, uh residential would be a, you know. Projected twenty-three thousand. Seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-four cents, um, five percent would be thirty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents. Um, I'm not comfortable going really above the rate increase more than.
Brendan, what did we do last year?
Last year, this board did five.
I remember we did it last year. Does it usually go up every year, you guys, I don't know the history of the board?
It does.
Yeah.
That that about that amount?
Yeah. So all our costs go up.
Yeah.
But it's it's normally about five percent.
This is the thing, our costs go up to maintain this. We have aged receivables over a hundred and twenty days totaling thousands of dollars and the ratepayer gets stuck with these increases. It's just, this is what we're trying to avoid uh by making people pay their fair share. Um, what is the expense on the wastewater yearly?
Total?
Eight forty-five, is it right here at the bottom here? That's the budget number?
Yes, sorry.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna do this.
So eight nine, well, eight nine, yeah, eight forty-four, sorry.
So it was.
Eight hundred and forty-four thousand.
Four, yeah, eight hundred and forty-four thousand four hundred and seventy-six.
So it was down from FY twenty-four?
It was down a little bit.
It's leveled out with twenty-three more or less and it's very significantly higher from twenty-twenty-one?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, why is that, just aging infrastructure more here, so I.
I believe so.
Um, do we have a capital fund for wastewater?
We do.
Yeah, what's the total on there?
We have a, without getting a detailed number, so this is why we put a. Part of the reason was we broke this down was from a five to a three as well, um, is because our our fund balance for our capital is fairly significant. Significant with wastewater, um, not to mention that, but I'm saying that it, you know, not to say that. That the projects are not.
Substantial, yeah.
Substantial, um, part of why, you know, a recommendation of a three percent increase probably if 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 that's what we wanted to do would be acceptable.
Honestly, we did five percent last year, I didn't serve on the trustees prior to that, so I'm unsure what the increases were.
I think it was five before that. I believe I believe it was.
So that's a ten percent increase in a two-year period, um, which is not insignificant. I would be at most, my personal opinion is to go three percent at the very most.
I absolutely agree.
Um, and I would even entertain not raising it at all.
If the capital funds covered that difference, I would be on.
Well, we also have aging infrastructure like Mr. McNair said, um, but, you know. We're raising, unfortunately, post-COVID, the economy is very different than it was. Um, everything's more expensive, insurances, taxes, e- everything, so I'd rather not hit our.
Do the water rates vary this year?
They did five percent.
Five percent, oh really?
Yeah, I wouldn't go five.
I wouldn't either.
Go five, I wouldn't feel comfortable.
Yeah.
Um, your recommendation is obviously a three percent or higher increase?
Yeah, I think, yes, I think that that, you know. Because of the, you know, what we have to offset is a little different than the water permissions.
Yeah.
I would say that, you know, I I'm comfortable with a three percent.
What are you thinking?
I I'm on more on just inside three percent or less, so I guess I definitely would go with what the town manager recommended, at three percent.
Yeah, I I think we gotta. Raise it a little bit, but if we can hold that down, I think uh.
Because we also, you know, part of this too with wastewater, you understand, do like. We do have pending repair of the wastewater plant, this way, you know, which are not gonna be a hundred percent covered by.
Yep.
Absolutely.
We have to think about how to run the town uh efficiently too.
And so our, in that respect. Do you think we have enough money in our?
I think our, for right now, it is, you know, for what we need.
Or is it gonna be big enough, we're gonna have to bond anyway?
I I think a difference of. And be perfectly honest with you, at this point, a difference of, you know.
Twenty-four grand?
Yeah, well, not less than that, you know, fifteen thousand dollars isn't gonna, you know, isn't gonna make a difference in that sense.
Well, you're looking at a three percent increase with your residential, which would increase it.
Yeah.
Twenty-three, seven.
Commercial.
Forty-three, seven.
So twenty-eight.
So twenty-eight. That's not insignificant.
It is not.
Um, I'd make a motion to pass a three percent annual increase.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I know. Um, okay, we're skipping sixteen, uh, other business? No other business? Municipal manager updates?
Uh, just a few quick ones, um, you have in front of you a seasonal update um from Okemo. From Bruce Schmidt, Vice President, General Manager of Okemo, unfortunately, he was not able to attend tonight. Um, so we did draft up an update of where, how the season went, how the. What the, what um some of their sustainability reports are regarding, you know. Uh, waste removal and as well as some of the projected outlooks into the summer, so. For you to take a look at, that will be entered into the minutes, so that'll be for anybody else to look at, um. Page paving project is obviously is coming through town, it's been starting right now, um. Bob, we found out what is wrong at the, in front of the high school, that spot.
Oh, good.
Yeah, no, it's not.
Oh, I didn't. I didn't think so, that's why I brought it up a year ago.
No. No, it's. They dug a hole and then water started coming in the hole and. So there is definitely a leak there that has been for years, apparently, and. The road there, the, for some reason, I guess a few years ago when they did it, the concrete road does not extend all the way over. So as the water was undermining that, that's how that sinkhole in front of the high school kept going, uh, it kept going and. Ron called me today and said, we dug the hole, I think we're good. Hung up, two minutes later, calls me back, he says, we have water.
Oh, no.
Uh, so they're going to patch that. You know, they're gonna fix it, it's gonna be.
Do they know where the water's coming from?
Absolutely not, um, so.
Probably one of those old water mains.
Yeah, so we're not really sure.
So is there, is there a a pipe under there, it's supposed to be running through?
No, it's it's, right now, they haven't, they only dug enough to see it bubbling a little bit, it's very, very slow.
Yeah.
Um, but it did test positive for chlorine, so we know it's treated.
I mean, there's, there's some water movement that's sucking material out of there, that's why it's sinking.
And you could see, you know, when you're standing there and traffic went by next to you, you could see the bubbles.
Oh, Jesus.
Oh, no.
They all sink all over.
Yeah, so that'll be taken care of as they continue to push through the paving, uh.
Could that be an old line?
Could be. You know, something that was abandoned.
I have a question for you.
Um, yeah.
The entryways off the sidewalk of the new paving.
Mm-hmm.
Aren't great, are they like on fixing those anyway?
This is just shim.
Okay, so.
There's a whole other.
Phew, cause I see the lines painted, I'm like, oh god, it looks a little thin.
So you saw it, the road was starting to ravel.
Yeah.
After they milled it.
Yeah.
So the shim keeps that all intact, it gives them, it gives them. Uh, their grade basis, so now they'll raise all their structures back up that they buried. To the grade that the new pavement's going.
I was gonna say, boy, that looks thin and kinda scabbed together, but they painted the lines, so.
That's a reset.
That's a state thing?
That's a state.
That they paint all those lines like that?
Yeah, they have to.
It's a waste, oh my god.
They have to be done that day.
The one that hand over were hilarious, cause they were kinda like wavy.
Yeah.
It's on the, they did it pretty bad.
Yeah, they don't spend as long on it.
Yeah.
So.
The crosswalk was wavy out here too, it was.
Okay.
But it didn't happen. We could, we could put our PMs out.
I don't ever really remember it being.
But I think through and going through town, it's, I mean, it's waste money, but it's not, because people have to have direction where to go.
Yeah.
So they, you know, that was, um, they'll they'll fix that and get that repaired. Probably early next week, they're gonna have to open it up before a long holiday weekend.
Yeah.
A good point.
That Memorial Day is Monday, um, celebration in town, nine o'clock. Um, parade, uh, ceremony at Madison Park, and then following to the cemetery, so.
Great.
And that's it.
I have one thing under other business, and I'm sorry, I forgot it, um, if we go back to it, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Um, the parking block on the corner of Pleasant and Dover. I would love to remove that because it's such an absolute eyesore and I'd love to put a sign there that just simply says, trucks turn here, we'll face fine. Um, and put the, put it right in their corner.
Now, where, where is this, Justin?
On Andover and Pleasant.
There's a Jersey barrier.
Jersey barrier.
It's just around Jersey barrier.
It looks so poor with that nice walking bridge right there and we're repaving and. Creek, I, I just, I thought, let's put a sign on there.
I'll, I can, I can ask the guys to pick it up and move it.
I th- I think they just had one post there initially, but the.
Didn't keep my help.
Alright, uh, we'll set date for the next meeting, June third, twenty twenty-five.
Not sick of us yet, are you?
That's a quick turnaround.
We've all signed warrant orders, cause there wasn't any. And uh, yes, we need a. And, uh, yes, we need a brief executive session.
I make a motion to adjourn the public portion of this meeting.
I'll second that.